Morning. I'll order the regular board meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May the 7th, 2024. It's 10 o'clock a.m. That's the time that was noticed and posted for our meeting. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane in Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand now and join me, we'll have to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Christ the same as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may I be seated? The order or deletion of any item on the agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the Board may vote during recess and during executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We begin with the roll call. District 1?
Crosby is here.
District 2 Supervisor English is present. District 3?
Supervisor Judd is here.
Thank you. We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 957-709-763 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-92004 direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public. The first person is Tricia Jaredad. I believe she's on Teams.
Yes, I am. Good morning, Supervisors. Tricia Jaredad in Sierra Vista. Thank you again for allowing remote access to meetings. We can't always get in the car and drive there. I have a question. On the county's page for meetings, there are two meetings noticed for 2:00 p.m. this afternoon. One is listed as a Board of Supervisors work session, and then the second one is listed as a flood control district board meeting. They have similar agendas and seem to be the same presentations, so I think they're probably the same meeting. But I wonder if it's a board meeting at which you might take action or if it's a Board of Supervisors work session or how they're being combined. And then I want to comment just for general public. There are several work sessions this afternoon, like one I mentioned, and it's on major road work and other public projects like with regard to flooding. And they're this afternoon, and they're really important. Even if you can't attend by Zoom or by in-person, in real time, you can always watch the video later, I really urge people to learn about these proposals. Too often, it seems that people are first alerted to a project when bulldozers arrive, and that's a bit late. So I urge everyone to look at the presentation slides, see if there's any area that interests you, and get engaged and learn more. Thank you.
Next is Radford Hyde, and he's on Teams. Radford?
Good morning. This is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista, and I have a couple of comments. The first I'm going to start with is the unusual rule that the Board of Supervisors is requiring people to fill out a speaker request form at least an hour before the Board of Supervisors meeting, which, as everyone knows, a good part of the population of Cochise County lives an hour away from the board meeting sites. And it's peculiar that someone might want to drive all the way down to the meeting and then be discarded from being able to discuss in person unless they have pre-filled out the form. So I don't know if there's any clarification in order of that or if that just refers to Teams and/or phone calls, but maybe that is something someone should revisit. And I'd also like to mention that if anyone else is still unresolved with the voting irregularities in Arizona, there was Proposition 309 in 2022, voting on whether or not to require additional ID for in-person and mail-in voting. And the proposition was not passed, and 1,219,668 people voted no, do not require this extra form of ID or any extra ID. And I would challenge anyone to ask if they know anyone, not anyone, who voted no on that proposition. I've asked 100 people at least, and not one person has said that they know one person that voted no on that. Also, I'd also like to point out that people with absolutely no credibility in electronic high-speed scanning, electronic voting machines, cybersecurity, IT, network operations, or database administration, seem to think they have credibility on their arguments about voting machines and election integrity. I think it's silly, and they're embarrassing themselves when they mention that it's all secure and they have zero credibility. Anyway, thank you very much. Have a good day.
The next speaker is Allison on Teams.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris, a registered voter from Portal, and I do thank you for allowing me to speak and to attend remotely. As the former speaker said, it really is a privilege, and we do appreciate it. A year ago, the county was sued by the Arizona Center for Investigative Reporting because of an undue delay in fulfilling a public records request made in 2022. As I understand it, and this is not my specialty, but the Sheriff's Department had repeatedly failed to provide a comprehensive list of its officers. That request, to me anyway, seemed fairly simple and straightforward, but the settlement cost the county $8,000. A year later, in January of this year, American Oversight sued the county for its lack of response to five public records requests going back as far as a year and a half ago. They have to do with the disruption and delays of our 2022 midterm election and involve the Supervisors and Recorder Stevens. The public has a right to know what was behind the chaos that surrounded our election and that cost taxpayers, excuse me, that cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. It is especially important because two of those officials named in the lawsuit, Supervisor Tom Crosby and Recorder Stevens, are running for reelection. I personally have an outstanding request that is almost a year old. I had asked for communications between Recorder Stevens and our former elections director, Bob Bartelsmeyer. I don't think this is a very complicated request. I could be wrong, but that's my gut feeling, but it's one year later, and it still remains unfulfilled. As I understand it, the Public Records Department consists of a paralegal, busy paralegal, who receives the requests and an attorney who processes them and forwards them to the appropriate department. If I'm not mistaken, and again, this is not my area of expertise, but I do believe Mr. Correa has other responsibilities, attending Board of Supervisor meetings, attending, excuse me, advising the board on legal matters, as the county's witnesses in lawsuits, et cetera. It would seem that this current team of two people is not quite adequate to process the requests in a timely manner. I have touched on this in a previous speech, but would now like to ask the Board to please consider hiring another staff person, even if part-time, to assist in responding to public records requests. The extra time and money that is spent on these lawsuits indicate, to me anyway, a pressing need to hire more help, and the sooner the better. Thank you in advance for taking this matter under consideration.
Our next speaker is Sandy Trull in person.
Hello, Sandy Trull from Sierra Vista. I'm going to talk about elections. Our elections are unconstitutional. Third-party corporations are not to be involved. Ballots shall not be counted in secret. Corporations interfere with chain of custody, machines, and processes. Elections are to be one day, paper ballots, voter ID, no mail-in ballots. You can't beat the existing election system, and the only option is to ban the machines. The entire election system is fundamentally designed to control the outcomes, and we, the people, are not included in these outcomes. Election maladministration with the voting machines, tabulators, e-poll books, third parties, all helping to destroy your sacred right to choose your representatives. The Board needs to reestablish the 55 precincts, remove third-party voting technology, ban the machines. We do not consent to mass mail-in ballots with no chain of custody or voter ID. We know they are lying. They know they are lying. They know that we know they are lying. We know that they know that we know they are lying, and still they continue to lie.
Watkins, the mental health coordinator on Giving Recovery a Chance, or Grace Program.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Good morning. According to the statistics that you've been giving us, it seems to be a success.
Yes, ma'am, so far. And we'll just start. You know that you guys are pretty much, so I will get right into it. So prior to 2023, we had two existing programs. We had Grace, which was Giving Recovery a Chance, and it primarily focuses on people with mental health issues. And then we had Traditional Diversion. In 2023, we, you guys, thank you, signed off on us receiving a grant of half a million dollars. And so with that money from the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, we expanded the existing programs. With the money that we had, the first thing that we did was we added additional staff. We added a drug diversion coordinator, Monica McCaul, who comes to us prior from the probation department, and an administrative assistant, Sierra Johnson. And then we added additional programs. We added the Drug Diversion Program and the Traffic Diversion Program. So prior to 2023, we were processing less than 200 cases a year total for diversion. And after the grant and the expansion, we are now processing this year 832, and we have plenty of room to grow. And prior to 2023, the program was making less than $30,000 a year, and now we are making $127,000 a year at least for this fiscal year. That's what we're in track for. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on Grace. So far, we've had 167 participants, and we've had a 90% success rate. And how we define success is once the person completes the program, if they don't reoffend within a year, we consider that a success. So again, we're at a 90% success rate, and we've saved the county a little under $4 million estimated, meaning that if all of the people who are in the program had to go to get restored so that they could be tried or go through with the criminal justice system, we saved the county $3,928,000. Yes, ma'am?
Tell me the number of participants again. Just one.
67.
167.
800.
Well, actually, so all of the cases total for this year, we've had 832 cases. If we're talking breaking the breakdown of each program, for the last year, we've had 36 participants in the traditional diversion, 44 for the new felony drug diversion, 455 for misdemeanors, 297 for traffic, and then Grace by itself has had 167. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Ms. Judd, are you on the line? Did you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Anything that discourages reoffending or relapses? Very good.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much for having me. Have a great day.
Well, thank you for, I want to think that you're the one that initiated this program.
Well, Grace, yes, ma'am. And then we've had a lot of help and support from Brian McIntyre and Lori Zuko to expand the program. So it's been fantastic.
Well, keep it going.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the presentation on our agenda from Public Works and Natural Resources?
That will have to be continued to another time. We don't have a date specific to that presentation, but we will post that.
Okay, stay tuned, because I think there's been some interest, you know, especially from one of the people who used to come to our Call to the Public every day. Okay, Consent Agenda is next. Items 1 through 9?
And, Chair, I move that we approve Consent Agenda items 1 through 9.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous. All right, we move on from the... Number 10 is a public hearing. Let's have a motion on the floor before we entertain a public hearing.
Madam, Madam Chair, I move that we approve Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store New Liquor License Application Submitted by Aiden Alcatar Aragon for Super Mini Aragon Located at 5773 West McDonald Drive, Wilcox, Arizona 85643.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so I'm going to...
Just one clarification. Supervisor Judge, you said super mini, and it's mini super. Just one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, mini super.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing, and Laura, our deputy clerk of the board, will give us information.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this item is for a new Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License Application Submitted for Mini Super Aragon Located in Wilcox. The application has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the $100 processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
It is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak for or against this issue? Hearing none, seeing none, and I'll close the public hearing, and we do have a motion and a second on. Is there any request in the board to speak?
No.
Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Now we move to the action items, number 11.
And, Chair, I move we approve holding a work session or executive session on a date certain to review the county attorney's legal strategy regarding the hearing for 2CA-CB 2023-0236, Daniel Lechance, Henry Stephen Conroy, et al., versus Cochise County, Cochise County Jail District, et al., to be held in Division 2 of the Arizona Court of Appeals on May 22, 2024.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. I have two people who wish to not speak but wish to support this item, and I have one person who wishes to speak on Teams. Lee Chadborn?
Yes. I also approve of that work session to schedule for the Cochise County's response to Dan Lechance for the jail tax lawsuit. Excuse me. Now, the Board of Supervisors should be in control of the direction of this lawsuit, and definitely, definitely not the county attorney when responding to this lawsuit. I want to see a yes vote to schedule a work session by the Board of Supervisors. Now, as you know, this court is going to be held in Tucson, Division 2 of the Court of Appeals on May 22. And in this work session to discuss the jail tax election lawsuit appeal, I want the Board to be informed of the CAO plans regarding the appeal. And I want the Board to direct those plans as per Arizona Statute 11-251, paragraph 14. That is my main concern, is that this meeting by the Board takes place and covers what I had just mentioned. So thank you very much.
I have brief comments. Very brief. Sanctions were disapproved against an Arizona political party this week, and rightly so. So the subject for me on item 11 is the threat against persons for sanctions. However, if my colleagues would care to discuss other matters related to this case, that would be fine with me, and we can make sure that that is agendized as appropriate. That is all.
Well, I have a couple of comments. I think it's totally inappropriate for the Board to sit and discuss how our attorney is going to be representing us in a court case that's already agendized, and so I certainly would not be voting to let the public or the other side know what our plans were. Did you have any comments, Ms. Judd?
I feel the same way. It could be an executive session, I suppose, but I'm not, I don't see the purpose of that right at this point. It seems like it's out of order. This meeting should have been held prior to the initial, the initial lawsuit possibly, but it feels like it's really out of order at this point. And unfortunately, I'm mostly going to be unavailable the next couple of weeks. I could be online, but I just don't feel comfortable going there with the kind of pressure that we're under, the same reason that Mr. Crosby mentioned. I feel uncomfortable going there because of that reason. So anyway, I'm not really comfortable with this idea.
Did you have any other comments, Mr. Crosby? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will put it up for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I please. I said aye accidentally. Now, it's about me speaking, I'm not feeling well. If I need to re-sess that.
Read the motion again. Just read the motion.
I think it would be sufficient for her just to say that she entered into an aye when she didn't mean to. Is that correct?
If you can just recall for the vote, that would suffice. If you can recall for the vote.
Okay. I'm going to call for the vote again, since she is online and not here and seeing things. So all those in favor of the item number 11 say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, same sign. Aye.
Aye.
It fails 2 to 1. So we move on to number 12, which is an intergovernmental agreement with Benson and Cochise County. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Benson and Benson and Cochise County for animal shelter services in Benson, Arizona, for the amount of $63,000 per fiscal year, with the option to renew for three successive fiscal years effective May 7, 2024.
And I'll second that $63,000. Is that what he said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I second it.
I have a motion and a second. So Ms. Gilman, would you care to explain this?
Thank you, Chairman English. So this is an IGA for our animal control officers to drop off impound animals that they pick up in the unincorporated areas of the county around Benson at the Benson Animal Shelter. Currently, they have to take those animals to Wilcox, so this will be a great benefit to both the owners of those animals, making it easier for them to pick up, as well as our officers, less time on the road transporting and getting more work done in the time.
I think it's also appropriate that we mention that what made this possible was Ms. Judd giving $45,000 to the City of Benson in order to expand their animal shelters. So in the past, they were not able to take any more animals in. So thank you, thank you for doing that. Any other comments about this? If not, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous. We move on to item number 13. Could I have a motion for the contract for architecture of the animal shelter?
Madam Chair, I move we approve a contract for architecture and engineering design services, Part 1, between Cochise County and the architecture company, Richard Faye, principal for the animal shelter project located at 915 South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona, in the amount of $65,000 effective May 7, 2024.
Second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Gilman?
Yes, so as I mentioned in our work session last week, this is the contract for architecture, engineering, and design services for the project on Toverville Road. It will primarily consist of Part 1, which is a needs assessment of the building and our program development for the shelter in Bisbee, which would be a new program for the county. This will get our project underway to first establish that we can use this building for such a purpose and what the costs would be. It'll provide us with much-needed information to move forward.
Any board members have any questions, concerns?
As I discussed when we talked about this issue in a couple of work sessions back, I am more in favor of expediting the other facility.
Any comments, Ms. Judd? I think that whatever direction we go, we still need to know about the facility that we thought might make an animal shelter, and we do have the grant. We talk about it being through USDA, but it was actually money that was designated by our congressional, and I hate to let that go until... It absolutely is not something that we can follow through with. So any other comments before I call for the vote?
Yes. There's another reason to go through with it. I understand that any of the scoping and feasibility-type work they do, needs assessment will still be beneficial no matter where, even if this project goes, doesn't work. And also, if we get them to go out and measure and do quite a bit of survey on that property, that's going to be a benefit to us in the future, whether we use it for ourselves or market it, or, you know, for whatever we use it for. The money that we put into that initial capturing of that property is going to be beneficial to the county.
I further along.
Okay.
My colleagues' points are well-taken, but my view is that the work and the studies that Ms. Judd mentions can be completed at a later time. And what is most expeditious is for the service to be established.
Okay. No further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
It is approved 2 to 1, as the record showed. Next, item number 14, grant with the City of Tucson, High and Thin Speed Drug Trafficking. County Attorney's Office.
We usually do a motion first.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, I make it for approve a grant agreement between H T twenty four dash two nine oh nine, City of Tucson, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA, between the city of Tucson, Cochise County, in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifty three dollars effective January first, twenty twenty four through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Go ahead.
Okay, um, as you probably know, we've had this grant for roughly thirteen, fourteen years now, I think.
Just state your name for the record.
Kenny Reeves, Cochise County Attorney. So we've had this grant for at least a decade or more, but probably more long lines of twelve or thirteen years. And this is just a renewal of the yearly grant. It supports an attorney, seventy three percent of the attorney's salary and a hundred percent of a legal secretary three's salary to cover what's been in the last three quarters, six hundred and seventy five drug referrals that have been in our office. And so that is pretty much the brunt of it. And I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Not at this time, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Judd?
No, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Kenny. We, we have had this for several years. Seems to be working, so I'm, I'll call for the vote if there's no other comments. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, thank you. Item number fifteen.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve an agreement between Cochise County Sheriff's Office and Axon Enterprises Incorporated for body worn cameras, tasers and digital video storage with all related supplies, software, training certifications and warranties in the amount of eight hundred thirty two thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents to be paid over a period of five years effective from April fifteenth, twenty twenty four through April fifteenth, twenty twenty nine.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. It's a lot of money, but I don't see Tom Alenin. So, Mr. Watkins, I guess you're on the hook.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair. Supervisor Crosby and Judd, thank you for having me. The Cochise County Sheriff's Office would request permission to enter into an, an agreement with Axon. They are the facilitators and creators of our tasers and our body worn cameras. Just a side note, supervisors, Chief Alenin was able to leverage his relationship with Motorola to reduce the contract by ninety four thousand dollars. So we're really excited about that. This contract is for five years and for an overall amount of
Eight hundred and thirty two thousand?
Yes.
Nine dollars and fifty cents.
That is correct. Sorry, I haven't got four of them today. So. But yeah, pretty much without it, we can't do our job effectively to the public standard. So this is the cheapest we could get and we really need this contract.
I, I have a couple of questions, details, if you, if you wish.
Yes, ma'am.
These body worn cameras, tasers, this amount considers trading them out yearly, by yearly, what?
Yeah, so we're buying a service, which means that if a taser breaks, if a body camera breaks, body worn camera breaks, we send it back and they send us another one.
And they're normally just turned over like computers would be?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we get new ones whether or not we break it? I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely.
The digital storage, in the beginning, that seemed to be a problem area, you know, of it taking a lot of space.
Yes.
So what percentage of this is just for the storage of those items in case we have to go to court?
That's, that's a great question. I'm sorry, I, I called Chief Alenin for that. He sent me here as a proxy. But the significant cost of this is for data storage. And for your benefit, ma'am, just so you know the backstory, we tried to go out and find a better source. And the cost to remove all the evidence that we currently have in the cloud to another server was ridiculously expensive. The majority of the cost tied up in this program is the data storage.
I thought that might be the case. That's why I asked the question.
Yes, ma'am.
But I wanted to make sure we were at least getting some hard stuff like cameras and tasers.
To, to be honest, Madam Chair, we're actually hoping that technology will continue to advance and reduce the cost of this by the time the next contract is up.
Um, any other questions or comments from other board members?
Not this time.
No, I don't.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. We move on to item number sixteen. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move, we approve intergovernmental agreement I G A twenty twenty four dash zero five three between the state of Arizona through the Department of Public Safety and Cochise County, specifically Cochise County Sheriff's Office, C C S O, to enhance law enforcement services to deter, apprehend, prosecute and detain individuals charged with drug trafficking and human smuggling, illegal immigration and other border related crimes within Cochise County in the amount of one point four million dollars effective July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Watkins?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby and Judd. So just a quick backstory, this used to be called Border Strike Force Funds and you may have remember approving those grants in the past. In twenty twenty three, Governor Hobbs rebranded that grant and contract to be the local border support fund. Additionally, we used to give roughly seven hundred thousand dollars on those previous grants. That grant has been changed now to one point four million dollars. This is the grant before you today. We, we really need this grant approved to continue our operational practices. Roughly forty percent of all calls for service have a border nexus. And we cannot continue to operate with, in our current operational tempo without the approval of this grant. Quick side note, we have been waiting for this grant for roughly nine months. It's been a handshake agreement for us to remain, to keep our detectives in the field where they are. Roughly seven hundred thousand dollars of this one point four million dollar grant will go to reimbursing costs that we have already put out for covering our detectives. We've been waiting on this grant. The governor's office has delayed getting it to us. So now we have it before us. We really need it approved.
I noticed it was in twenty twenty three, so.
Yes, ma'am.
At pay.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yes, ma'am. As I mentioned previously, my platform is prevent illegal entry. And to remind the public, the costs of high speed pursuits, incarceration, courts, deaths and so on are reduced to the extent that illegal entry of persons in contraband are prevented from crossing the border. Any comments?
Any comments, Ms. Judd?
I don't have anything.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Um, next, item number seventeen, again from the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Dejanto. You two going to tag team this one?
Man, you can sit there a lot like a shadow man, the chair, so.
Can I have a motion, please?
Number seventeen, approved grant agreement, H T dash two four dash two nine one two, City of Tucson Southwest Border Region High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA program and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to participate in Southern Arizona Major Investigative Team SAMH in the amount of one hundred two thousand, two hundred forty six dollars for salaries, partial employee related expenses, services and supplies effective January first, twenty twenty four through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Dejanto?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this is another long term legacy grant renewal. This one is through HIDA, similar to what the county attorney presented earlier, except they're supporting a task force officer that will be assigned to the D E A and further narcotics investigations throughout the county. We've had this for fifteen plus years.
And it's for one individual?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further comments and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved.
Thank you.
Well, I don't see Ken Foster, so are you standing in for?
I am, Madam Chair.
You, you're quite a generous person this morning.
I learned these requests this morning, so.
Mr. Watkins, could we have a motion, please?
Number eighteen, approved recurring grant agreements between Cochise County and the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden Subrecipient Agreement Number two, three, zero, four, one, one, dash, zero, one in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand dollars for overtime mileage and subrecipient agreement twenty three, zero, four, one, one, dash, zero, two in the amount of two hundred one thousand, seven hundred eighty two dollars for O P S G equipment effective April first, twenty twenty four through March thirty first, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby and Judd. So this grant or this agreement is a request for us to, to receive roughly three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from the Arizona Department of Homeland, Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden. In this grant, one hundred and seven thousand? One, one hundred and.
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve thousand dollars will be used for overtime and mileage. I know that this grant has been before you before and we've had a lot of conversations on it. This program is critical for us to keep deputies in the field. Quick side note, this allows us to respond to critical incidents with the deputies on Stone Garden, respond to emergencies such as domestic violence disputes and things in remote areas of the county that we would not have deputies there unless we had Stone Garden operating. The two hundred and one thousand dollars is used for equipment. We're buying a bunch of equipment such as gray key and celebrating forensic extraction devices to combat child sex trafficking and human trafficking by removing cell phone data from cell phones and things like that. We cannot do that without this grant.
Well, it's a lot less than some grants we've had in Stone Garden, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions?
No. Nope.
Were you going to say something?
I said no. Sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Okay, item numbers nineteen. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move, we approve a contract extension of the Operation Stone Garden Grant twenty twenty three Subrecipient Agreement Number twenty two dash A Z D O H S dash O P S G dash two, two, zero, four, two, zero dash, zero, one from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, A Z D, A, A Z D O H S from April third, twenty twenty four to January thirty first, twenty twenty five to allow the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to exhaust remaining funds of two hundred one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the same thing as the last grant with last year in twenty twenty two, we received, excuse me, twenty twenty three, we received roughly five hundred fifty thousand dollars from Arizona Department of Homeland Security. We were unable to exhaust all those funds. So we request that this be continued. We enter into this agreement so we can exhaust the remaining amount of that money.
Under the same criteria?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Have a motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Mr. Foster, Mr. Alenin and Mr. Watkins. Okay, item number twenty.
Madam Chair, Development Services Approved Professional Services Agreement two, four, dash, three, six, dash, D E V, dash, zero, one for the hearing officer to address violations of zoning and floodplain regulations according to the fee scheduled outlined in Exhibit B effective May seventh, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cox?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a renewal of the professional services agreement with Gregory Johnson to continue to serve as the county's hearing officer. The agreement does increase his hourly rate from fifty dollars to seventy five dollars an hour.
Why does Mr. Johnson get a raise?
Uh, Mr. Johnson has been the hearing officer since twenty sixteen and he did request a, a raise and I agree with him. He is valuable to the county. He does a great job for us and we'd like to continue to have him serve in this role.
Did he threaten to quit if, if we didn't give him a raise?
No, he did not.
Okay. So i- if we don't approve this, he'll still be the hearing officer?
His current contract is due, excuse me, is up in November. But since he's requesting the increase and instead of coming back in November, we're just renewing the contract now for another year.
Good, I think I will.
Approximately how many hearings does he have in a year? I say he because he's.
Uh, it varies. You do get an annual report from the county attorney's office every year. I would just be speculating, but it typically, he meets, he has hearings every other month and they're between typically ten and twenty five to thirty. So he typically doesn't work a full day hearing cases. We do try to resolve these cases prior to hearing, to them going to the hearing officer. And a lot of times they're continued as well to, to the next hearing. But there, there's some days he has a pretty steady workload. Some, some days he's only works like just a couple hours for us.
And he does this about every other month, you say?
Every other month he's currently scheduled. If, and the cases increase, we could bump it up to a once a month if necessary.
Where are these cases heard? Are they heard in Sierra Vista or here?
That's correct, Supervisor Crosby. They are heard in Sierra Vista.
Okay, a- and does Mr. Johnson get mileage besides his, his salary or pay?
Um, I don't see mileage included in his professional services agreement.
Okay, and, okay. Does anybody know? Do you have?
Okay. If it's not included, if it's not in the agreement, it's not.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that board members, they, they get a, a gas allowance of some kind for, for planning and zoning this home. So I thought maybe he'd get something like that.
I don't see it in the fee schedule. He, he lives in Sierra Vista, so it's not much.
Any kind of professional services we don't. Okay, any other questions or comments, Ms. Judd?
I saw that his, his maximum sal- or not salary, but his maximum pay, he could receive is seventy two hundred in a year. Is that, is that what I remember seeing? And that kind of helps that there's a cap on it.
That's, that's correct, Supervisor Judd. The maximum is seventy two hundred a year that we could pay him.
And that's with the increase in salary?
With the increase, correct. Yeah, I don't think we'll even come, come close to that. Like I mentioned, it's every other month and rarely do we have him for eight hours a day.
All right, any other comments, questions?
No.
Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those approved. It passes. So two to one. So we move on to item number twenty one with the Health Department. Could I have a motion while Maria is coming for, or Myra?
Madam Chair, Health and Service, Health and Social Services, item number twenty one, approved amendment four of the intergovernmental agreement, I G A C T R zero, five, five, two, five, six between Arizona Department of Health Services, E D H S, Title Five, Maternal and Child Health, M C H, Healthy Arizona Families and Cochise County Health and Social Services in the amount of one hundred sixty six thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars effective July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Myra?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. So this amendment will fund a year five of the five year cycle for this grant. What services we provide under this is for reproductive health, which includes well woman exam. We support breastfeeding strategies and physical activity to include sports physicals provided by our nurse practitioner at all of our locations. So this funding will allow us to continue to provide these services to our community for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
It's the last year of this.
It's the last year of this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pro life and I was wondering if any of this having to do with reproductive health has anything to do with abortion, with county funds being used for abortion?
No. No.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Myron. Uh, item number twenty-two, also from the Health Department, could I have a, a motion while Suzanne is coming forward?
Item number twenty-two, approved amendment five of contract CTR zero five zero five nine four between the Arizona Department of Health Services, DHDS and Cochise County Health and Social Services, CHSS for the Health Start Program in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-four through July fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Morning, Madam Chair.
Just a minute, let me, I, 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 you need to hear a second here.
Oh, sorry.
There was a second. There was a second. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, uh, Judd and Crosby. I'm here to request approval of amendment five of the Health Start, uh, contract. This contract has been in place it, within Cochise County for thirty-five years. Uh, with the approval of this contract, we will continue to serve families in the Sierra Vista, Bisbee, Naco, Alphita, Douglas, Pertiville and Wilcox area. We are now moving out into the Winchester Heights community to provide the same type of services that we provided to the other families in the county.
Just briefly, uh, for the, the public and the board members, um, this Health Start Program, basically what services do you provide?
It's a home visiting program. Uh, we go in and teach the parents on proper safety, good nutrition, child development services, and our home visitors work off of a, a proof curriculum that's provided by Arizona Department of Health Services.
Ms. Hagel, I wonder if, uh, any of this program has to do with vaccinations?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Supervisor. Item number twenty-three, uh, could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, number twenty-three, information technology, approve obligation of three million dollars from the local assistance and trial and consistency fund for the county enterprise resource planning ERP project in accordance with Cochise County procurement policy.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Mr. Casey?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, yeah, this is a follow-up from our April tenth work session uh, on the ERP and requesting to obligate that three million dollars so that we can move forward with this project uh, to get a, a more efficient system implemented for the county for HR and our finance systems.
Any other comments from board members or questions?
And what is this gonna do better than what we have now?
It's gonna, right now, our, our process is about sixty percent manual processes for our payroll, um, accounts payable, uh, and all those other, other systems within the, the finance and HR department.
Okay.
So it'll make it about more efficient.
And we had a, a gentleman come in, uh, who was a consultant for that, and we had a meeting about that two weeks ago or something like that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
So it's looking for efficiencies?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item twenty-four from Public Works, could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, item number twenty-four, approved purchase of a AL three hundred E-Z, mid-carried striping vehicle from East Miler in the amount of two, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, Mr. Fosse.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Jason Fosse, and I'm the Public Works Director for Cochise County. I'm here today to respectfully ask, uh, for your approval to purchase a striper truck for the highways division of Public Works.
Could, could you, um, i- is this just like what we have, or is this a new, a new version?
So, uh, the one that we, it's very much like the one we have. Uh, it is a used truck. We were supposed to have ours rehabbed a couple of years ago, and, uh, some thi- some things fell through on that. And then when we went to get it rehabbed this, uh, year, we found out that a lot of things are not available for that truck anymore. They're obsolete, and so we're looking at the next best thing, which is a truck that has already been updated with all the latest and greatest. And it is used, but it has a new engine in it, and it has all the latest and greatest gadgets on it, so we're trying to run that way. Uh, because the cost to rehab our truck was gonna be about two hundred and two thousand dollars, and it was gonna be down for two years, which would force us to contract our striping. So, uh, the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, I think, is good money.
Sounds like a good deal. The other one, is it able to be used? Could, could someone else use it now? Cause we've been using it.
Yeah, we're currently using it, and, uh, the pumps are functioning, but the pumps are obsolete now, so once they start failing, uh, we're just kind of band-aiding things together and, until we can, uh, auction it off, it will, uh, whoever buys it will probably have to send it in for the update that the new truck that we're looking at, uh, has on it already.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Judd?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's, uh, unanimous and approved. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, state and federal legislation, not much going on at the state right now. Everybody's trying to figure out when is Sunny Dog gonna? Um, Mr. Watkins? County members?
Yes, just very briefly, uh, this week is Public Service Recognition Week, so if we can give all of us a round of applause. And a comment.
All right, um, current events? Two brothers?
I'll pass.
Uh, I'll pass, Ms. Judd, you have current events?
It's May, and it's time for the Wine Festival. I think that's coming up this weekend, actually, so. That's all, thank you.
Wine Festival in Wilcox. Okay, uh, before I, um, close this meeting, I need to tell you that our next meeting is today at one o'clock in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room. It's a work session regarding Public Works informational update. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.